Sometimes we have some confusion between the school choice name and also the schools of choice name. And when we were revisiting, maybe changing the name, we also noticed that our current policy needed to be updated, to be revised because of no long, we're no longer under No Child Left Behind. So that kind of removes some of the language that's in our current policy, J-B-C-E. So in doing so, we discussed about what would be a correct name for school choice since we're no longer under the constraints of No Child Left Behind. And we came up with Educational Opportunity Transfer. So part of the changes to J-B-C-E is to change the name from school choice to Educational Opportunity Transfer and to update it. And in doing so, we also went ahead and we wrote the Educational Opportunity Transfer Request Form, which also spells out the detail. It removes people from doing a hardship form. Now it's appropriately aligned to the new policy file. And the last part that Dr. Aguilar had requested was that we take it a step further and even tease out some Educational Opportunity Transfer Administrative Rules, some guidelines to make sure that the process is followed appropriately. And I'm welcome to answer any questions y'all might have, best I can. Mona's also available to address any of the policy language.
Okay. Looking at the policy language, I'm just a little confused. I read the top section that changes the public school choice terminology to Educational Opportunity Transfer, but then there's a section that begins at the bottom of the first page that says Louisiana Public School Choice. And the language there makes it appear that any parent at any, of a student at any school can ask for a transfer to any school. So it doesn't seem limiting in any way, and it makes it look like it's a completely different transfer program from the EOT program.
And Mr. Craig can help me out. Mona stepped out, but I believe that's the language that was required by the state law that had to remain in the policy.
But does that relate back to the transfers from a D-R-F school to one of the schools identified as having available space?
And that's addressing the administrative rule, yes. There still has to be capacity at a receiving school in order for the child to be enrolled.
Okay. It's just, it's a little ambiguous to me, and if that language is required by a state rule or regulation, I mean, I guess the regulation permits us to limit the number of schools that children can be transferred to depending on availability or capacity. So it just, it just seems a little ambiguous to me, and you know, two years down the road, if somebody picks up this policy and says, "I have a right to move my kid wherever I want because here's this section." So it needs to be cleaned up enough so that a couple of years down the road, we can say, well, no, this relates directly back to this. So...
Okay. And we did have our board attorney review it, and he actually approved it as it is. But we can take, pull it back and take another look at it and see if we can add any language there to clear that or make it more defined.
Okay.
Be happy to do that.
I have a question. So initially, you said you wanted to change the name partly because of the confusion with the Schools of Choice program?
The name confusion, yes.
Right. But Bessie refers to this as school choice, right? Still?
It does, and it is still following the public school choice law.
So why not change the name, and I think we'll get into this maybe a little later, of the Schools of Choice program, which is something totally of our creation, rather than change this name? It seems like it might be better to stick with school choice because this is how Bessie and the state refer to the program, and this is how the law's referred to, is school choice. And then to avoid the confusion, maybe change the names of Schools of Choice.
Definitely can take that under consideration, absolutely.
That seems like it might streamline my issues a little bit where we're keeping this in a particular box and separating school choice from Schools of Choice.
Okay.
Ms. Angel, any questions or comments?
No, ma'am. I never realized that one prepositional phrase could make such a difference.
Okay. So is there any particular action you would like us to take on this at this executive committee meeting? Or would you like to get with your, I don't know if there's a committee or a team-
There was.
-to talk about the changes that we've just discussed and bring it back?
Absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. I like to, there's no urgency in approving this, you know, moving it forward to any action. So I like to pull this out and take it back to committee and come back with another recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The second item on our agenda is the J-R-O-T-C modification, and you're up again, Ms. Sammet.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. It was brought to our attention, maybe a month or so ago, that we had a meeting with our commanders and also Schools of Choice committee members discussing the Department of Defense, their guidelines, and also our Schools of Choice guidelines. And I'm not trying to be humorous, but this is the DOD regulations for the Navy, and it's 100 and semi-pages. And this is the one for the Air Force, just a few pages less. And then we actually reviewed our Schools of Choice policy, which is three pages. And our three pages was actually, best words I can use or best language is, we were dictating how the J-R-O-T-C program was to run their program to conform to the Schools of Choice guidelines and procedures. So in the process, we just found that we would be making several exceptions to Schools of Choice policies and procedures for the junior ROTC. And we found that it would be advantageous to actually pull the junior ROTC program out of Schools of Choice, but treat it as a unique program that basically entitles the junior ROTC programs to all the rights and privileges of Schools of Choice, but at the same time, giving them the authority to run their program under the guidelines of the Department of Defense.
Well, we talked about this a little bit, and I don't want to see the J-R-T-C program moved out of Schools of Choice. And I'll try to elaborate. One, it's another conversation that I think we're going to have in the next agenda item. I don't believe that the J-R-O-T-C requirements and our requirements have to be mutually exclusive. I do believe that we are brilliant enough to modify this document so that we can put a statement that if, whether it's J-R-O-T-C or some other program maybe in the future, if that program has more stringent requirements than what this document, that that program's policies and procedures override this. I'm not a lawyer, but I know that in legal contracts, there are phrases that precedents, basically, if this law or this statement, this statement can trump this statement. So instead of trying to make the J-R-O-T-C program conform to Schools of Choice policies and procedures, I think that we can modify the Schools of Choice policies and procedures to conform to higher standards set by Department of Defense regulations. For example, if a student refuses to comply with the DOD regulations, that should be an automatic trump card essentially to the rest of this document. We are providing children a privilege to be in Schools of Choice. And with that privilege comes a responsibility to comply to the policies. And in this case, the policies are more stringent than the standard Schools of Choice. So I think that we can modify this policy and procedure even with a simple section or paragraph that says, despite all the words on these three pages, if your program is governed by something that is more stringent, then those more stringent regulations apply, and you can lose your right to be a part of the Schools of Choice.
I agree with Eric. I think that it would be a simple matter of our three-page policy, including a paragraph with the subheading J-R-O-T-C, and simply saying that, you know, the J-R-O-T-C programs will comply with the applicable regulations required or mandated by the Navy or the Air Force or whatever the case may be. That way, we're adopting into our three-page policy those two other documents, and it becomes part of our policy without us having to retype everything. So it, and it makes everything compliant, simple, and keeps it all still part of the lottery Schools of Choice. Anything else on that one? Now, I understand, and maybe this isn't the time, maybe no one's prepared, but we may be looking at opening a third junior ROTC at one of our high schools?
We are currently in the process of completing two applications for one potential site. It would be, and Mr. Kinesik would know, an NDCC program. It's kind of a preliminary, pre-junior ROTC program. That would be an Army program, and at the wishes of the board, it would be placed at either Karen Crow or Northside. I actually submitted those applications today. In general, an NDC, NDCC program is accepted immediately. The caveat is, the school board basically funds it. It's not funded by the defense departments. And then at some point, you apply, and over a period of time, depending on the demand for the programs, you'd become a full ROTC program in anywhere from two to five years.
Okay. And we're looking at having that start for the next school year?
With budgetary approval in May and June, we'd look to place an Army program at one of the two schools.
Excellent. Okay. Any other comments? Ms. Angel?
You mentioned perhaps Karen Crow and Northside. I recall a few months ago, we had discussions about an additional biomedical, whatever the correct term is, School of Choice. Is that, is that still going? Is that still in line to go to Northside?
No. That's...
Oh. The Health Careers has, we've created a duplicate identical Health Careers program at Northside High. And actually, the Northside High program has a CNA Certified Nursing Assistant component added to Northside that's actually not available at Lafayette High. So that was approved by the board probably two months ago, and that will be in place for this fall.
So I would just remind my fellow members, we just added that at Northside. Perhaps Karen Crow would be the logical one for this one. How long would we have to potentially fund this program before the Department of Defense would kick in?
When I talked to the Army representatives about two weeks ago, week and a half ago, it kind of depends on, you know, the demographic factors at the school. The school's going to need to have, if there's a student population of 1,000, you need 10%. If it's anything less than 1,000, you, I'm sorry, if it's over 1,000, you need 100 kids. If it's less than 1,000, you need 10%. So based on economically disadvantaged, the demographic population, and the number of kids interested enrolling, we would potentially have to support that. He said anywhere from three to five years. If you have Title I population, free and economically disadvantaged students, the greater that percentage, the more likely the Army would make that a full ROTC program.
And just, just rough numbers, I'm obviously not asking for a precise figure, but just roughly, what kind of expenses would we incur to fund such a program?
So initially, we would have to support, you would pay for the Army officer. The Army would prefer two officers. In a tight situation, you could get by with one Army officer. Como did that for several years. So you're looking at roughly a salary of $70,000, $75,000. I think the initial purchase of uniforms, I'd hear, 25, 30,000? We'd need, we'd need 100 full sets of uniforms.
So I think we're budgeting about $175,000 for year one cost.
I think that was two officers and 100 uniforms.
Thank you.
Now, we don't have two officers at Como High as of right now, right?
Only because they're in the process of advertising and placing and selecting that lead officer.
Just something for us to be very aware of is that we don't want to, pilfer, I guess? We don't want to expand at a rate that hurts our other existing ROTC programs in that, and maybe we cap, maybe we cap one or two. And what I'm concerned about is if, if you remember, in recent history, we dropped below the required 100 students at Como High School, and that had a financial impact on us. And we don't want to lose that status. They're healthy now. I think the Schools of Choice helped. K-D-N-S program is a little more popular right now. But I just think it's something that we need to think about. You know, we don't want to have 80 kids at each program and have all three of them unfunded. So...
You definitely bring up a good point. We actually, I had the principals at the two schools start surveying their population so we could get an idea of what the demand would be for an Army program, whether you were in-zone and attended it in-zone, or it was a School of Choice and you'd potentially have to go to another school. So Ms. Dickerson in Technologies got an ongoing ballot that we're tallying the results on interest at the two schools.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else on this item, I will move on to the Schools of Choice discussion. Ms. Sammet?
Thank you. And it's been brought to my attention that there's concerns about Schools of Choice, that we can make some improvements, we can strengthen the program. And I absolutely agree. I think it's one of our best-kept secrets in the parish. I think we are a gemstone, and I think we should have statewide, if not national, recognition as many other programs do in other states and other cities. So over the past two weeks, I've been just kind of researching and looking at some of the information I've received. And I do want to say that with Ms. Ozzy Yazdi on our staff now as Marketing and Recruitment Officer, she has sent me some information. We've just recently went through a Schools of Choice lottery. I've talked with Ms. Barbara Pippins as well. And of course, Ms. Olivier, Robin Olivier, has been working with me on this. So I do have several things that we would like the opportunity to research and meet, not only in-house at the district level, but also to include the 18 Schools of Choice principals in our conversation, and also academy directors and lead teachers at the schools. So I've got several things that if you would like me to identify that we would like to take a look at to see if we can improve, I'd be happy to share that with you. Okay. So I'm going to start with reviewing the enrollment and application process. We would like to focus to reduce the window of time for applications and the acceptance process. We would like to remove academies from the lottery system that do not fill their allocated seats on a regular basis. And we'd also like to establish first-time applicant entrance requirements at the middle and high school level. For example, like doing interviews or auditions for programs. Ms. Ozzy has collected feedback from the 2016 Fall Frenzy, so we would like to review all that information and see if Fall Frenzy is really as a positive, media-positive recruiting venue as we think it is. And if it is, what can we do to make it better? If it's not, then we would like to make some recommendations to change the venue. Consider magnet school distinction for schools that do not have an attendance zone, and also for schools that are drawing more than 50% of their current enrollment outside of their zoned area. We'd like to review the current marketing and recruitment strategies for better, to better educate and expose our fifth graders and our eighth graders to the next level of academy choices and curriculums. We would like to assure that the elementary, middle, and high school academies with the same theme have the appropriate vertical alignment, including advanced classes for those that are currently in the themed strand, and entry-level classes for the students who are just entering for the first time. We would like to review the current academy curriculum and ensure the most advanced technological labs and experiences are being embraced. Analyze current policies and procedures and discuss the changes in small collaborative groups with our 18 principals and academy lead teachers. Develop entry-level courses with level proficiency. For example, many of our middle school students who go to LJ Alamo, many of them have already been taking private music lessons or dance, and some students who enter have never been exposed to music or dance. So we would like two different levels of entry courses. We would like to develop a senior-year capstone course that would showcase the academy experience and present this to the public, such as an evening of the arts or a display of robotics. We would like to have a venue where we can show videos of the students' internships and show the experience that they had with our workforce development community. We would like to develop a district advisory board to support all of our high school academies. And we would like to, two that I heard tonight is review a possible name change for our Schools of Choice program to something else, and also change the wording in our Schools of Choice policy to include a program with more stringent policy requirements.
So one thing that I hope your committee will look at is the possibility of starting a STEM elementary program that will feed into our STEM middle and high school. I have anecdotal stories that some of the children who are taking slots at J. Wallace James are doing so because they want to get into STEM, not that they want to follow the music, the arts or music route. So they're taking seats up that kids are on the waiting list for, for an elementary program that we currently don't offer. Considering the success of our STEM academy, it makes sense to me that we begin that at a much earlier level. Second thing is in looking at the three-page policy, one thing that concerns me, and I think there were some anecdotal stories about this as well, is that once a student is admitted into a School of Choice, they get to stay at their out-of-zone school for that entire year regardless of what's going on, whether they are doing what they need to do for the academy. And I do have some difficulties with that. We know that there are some students who go to Schools of Choice not because they have any interest in the School of Choice, but because they want to go to an out-of-zone school. And that's not what the purpose of our Schools of Choice programs are. So I think that we need to add in something. If someone is going to, for example, the Health Academy at Lafayette High School, and they are not participating or not interested, they should have absolutely no right to continue that school year at that school that's out of their zone. They need to immediately go back to their zoned school. So I would like for your committee to take that into consideration as well.
Yes, ma'am. So noted.
Mr. Kinesik?
Just a couple of things I'd like to add to your analysis. The first is, if you could consider, and Mr. Craig, you'd probably know a lot about this, robotics School of Choice alternative. From what I understand, we have upwards of about 50 students that already participate in robotics. They're highly successful, and this is a plug for them. They are going to the World Championships in Texas this month, and they are ranked currently number one in the world. So I think it's something that we should celebrate. Which brings me to the next thing is, I think it's commonly, it's a common phrase, but good is the enemy of great. And I think we have a good program, I really do. But I think to get to the next level, that we want these to be, and I've used the word elite, I think that we're at a point now where we can make our Schools of Choice elite academies. And I like the word elite academy, and I'm not saying that needs to be the new name. But I think when it comes, when it comes to marketing and it comes to setting the standard, when a student or a parent knows that their student is applying for an elite academy, they know it's different than just a School of Choice. It's not a option. And I think it's important that the public understands, this isn't an option that we're just providing you because we're required to by statute or law. This is an option we're providing you because we think it's a good thing. We're funding these programs with extra money, extra school board money, because we think it's a good thing. So I think that we can make the case that these are elite academies and set standards that are higher. That was the second thing. The third thing, I think that we need to, now that we've rezoned, and now that we, now that we've made it very crystal clear that these are choices, these are opportunities that we're providing people, I think it is time to make a healthy, or take a healthy look at transportation options. I think we are now at a point where we can consider requiring on the parental side that if you want to attend a School of Choice or an elite academy, then you have to transport your person to the zone. Now, we'll still run school buses within the zone, but you have to come, you have to transport your person to that zone. Or alternatively, we can provide opportunities for public transportation, as far as I understand from Mr. Centany's analysis. That could be an option for a lot of students to take public transportation, and it might be a bargain for us as a school system. But I think we're at this point where we can eliminate the, what I think is an entitlement thought process in the parish that, well, it's a School of Choice, you have to get me there. No, we don't. And I think it's healthy to at least take a look at that option and see how much money there might be to be saved. Those were the first three.
Ms. Angel?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Kinesik's comments, but let us, let us, let us be careful not to prohibit someone from going to, someone who's qualified and does, and works and succeeds at the program, let us not keep them from attending a School of Choice. If perhaps there may be only one parent in the household, there may only be one automobile in the household, and that parent may have to take that automobile to work or for whatever reason, transportation might be a little difficult. I like what you said about public transportation. I just want to be careful that we don't, you know, we don't lock some people out because of economic reasons from attending a School of Choice.
And part of that study too can be the way we transport kids for the private schools. We have hubs essentially, so maybe, maybe that's an alternative. Maybe there are various hubs within each zone that can transport between zones.
I think the word we use is satellite stop, so we can take a look at that.
All right. And I think you mentioned it. I just want to make sure that when you're looking at everything regarding the Schools of Choice, that, and Ms. Morris talked about it, is, again, if we're going to be, if we're going to be providing extra effort, extra instruction, extra funding, then we need to hold the kids to a standard. And whatever that standard is, it may be different for every program. For instance, ROTC programs have a higher standard. We may get funded by Google to have a Google Academy, and Google may have different standards. Or, you know, maybe our law program may have different standards. But I think it's important that, for the integrity of the programs, there, in the military or in ROTC, there's nothing more, I guess, disheartening than when you are wearing the uniform, you have your hair cut, you know the, your rates, the things that you need to know, you've, you know, your uniform looks, you know, crisp and clean, and you're following all the regulations, and then somebody isn't. Somebody's late for formation even though you were early for formation, and somebody isn't, and then nothing happens to them. There is no higher standard, and it's bad for morale. And I think that's across the board, no matter if you're in band or anything else. If we're not holding everyone to a higher standard, then it's just, it's just bad all around. It's a distraction to the teacher, it's a distraction to the other students. So, and I know that there's a lottery process, but I think there needs to be minimum qualifications to enter the lottery. And then, once you're in the program, maybe we raise those standards that people have to meet. to meet. And they're unique for each academy, but I think there needs to be unique standards for each one.
So my only question, or I guess my concern is, you can open the door and, by answering this question, because there's all sorts of possibilities we can do. I mean, we, you used the word elite, we can make this like, oh my gosh, an outstanding elite program. My question is, I know I was on the front end of the conception of Schools of Choice. It was to give all students an opportunity regardless of their performance level, regardless of transportation constraints, to pursue the educations, educational opportunities that we had out there. So I just want to make sure that we're, you're okay that we're moving away from maybe the original vision of what Schools of Choice was?
Well, the Schools of Choice program was originally started while we were still under the desegregation order, and it was a way to help the school district reach unitary status. So we're no longer under the desegregation order. The Supreme Court now says you cannot take race into account for any purpose. So, yeah, we are definitely away from what that original ideal was, but at the same time, I don't think that we need to look at creating entrance requirements that are going to exclude any section of our population, whether it's based on race, or socioeconomics, or anything else. I do agree with Mr. Angel and Mr. Kanesic. We do need to look at our transportation for schools of choice, but we need to also have some leeway in there for appeals for those families who are not able to get their children to certain places, and we would have to look at those on a case-by-case basis, I think. But that is something I think that your committee, with all their great educational experience that we don't have sitting up here, will be able to be creative with and come up with several ideas that the full board can then consider when it comes back to us on those kind of matters.
And would you like to have a board workshop, say, in another month or two months, in June, where we have the time to work with? I know testing is a bad time to ask principals, come to meetings, and lead teachers, give us the opportunity to really work this out and come with a recommendation to see what we can implement before the next go-round of the traditional process we followed for lottery and everything?
Yeah, I like the idea of a workshop because it does allow for more open conversation between the board and staff and members of the public, so.
Would June be appropriate, or later, you know?
Early June.
Early June. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Hidalgo?
I just had one more. Let's not, I don't want to confuse establishing standards for preventing kids from having an opportunity. I want all kids to have an opportunity to excel, but I want them to excel. I don't want a student who is enrolled in performing arts and is in the band, standing in the back of the room freezing to participate in the band. And I don't want a kid who is enrolled at Como, participating in ROTC, to say, you know, I didn't wear my uniform today because I didn't feel like it. Or a kid at Acadiana in the business program getting a D in his business classes. There needs to be standards. And if those standards are, you must maintain a 2.5. It's a special program, a 2.0 isn't good enough, you need to maintain a 2.5. Or you need to make at least a C or above in all your academy-specific courses. Whatever those requirements are, again, they're different for each one, but there needs to be some sort of standard that we can hold people accountable to.
And currently, and I attached a couple of handbooks for you to review, but currently most of our academies have, after they've entered, they have, in order to be retained in the program, they have the requirements. I guess, again, my question is, I don't want to be so stringent on the entrance requirements that we exclude students from pursuing educational opportunity to learn how to play the piano if we're saying you have to be proficient in piano playing in order to join. So, again, is it, are we still giving every, every child an opportunity to become part of a program to learn, or do they already need to have the basic skills in order to excel?
Well, I would say that you can establish minimum standards. You know, maybe it's a 2.0 and no conduct violations. I mean, but no, a kid with a 1.9, who's barely struggling to get through wherever he's at, who has had repeated conduct violations, probably shouldn't be put into an elite academy. And I don't think they should be given the opportunity for a lottery. But that's, again, that's just my opinion. The kid that does, you know, struggle but gets a 2.0, but really wants to learn the arts, has never shown to have any conduct problems, maybe that person should be able to enter the lottery. I'm not saying that the standards for entry should be any higher than passing, or what's tolerable as far as behavior. We just shouldn't put kids that we know aren't really doing it for the right reasons in the lottery.
And that brings up another issue for me. Sorry, Mr. Hidalgo, it's almost your turn. One is, I'm not sure what policies or procedures are currently in place to make sure that the, I forgot what you called them, but the heads of the academies are monitoring that the students who are in the academies are participating, and whether that means they're participating verbally in class, or they're playing their scales on the piano, or whatever the case may be for each individual one. But I do think that we need to have some process, consistent process in place, to make sure that students are in the programs because they want to be, and not because they're taking advantage of a loophole to go to an out-of-zone school. So that kind of abuse is simply not acceptable, and we need to make sure we have some type of procedure in place. And so the language and the current policy that says, once you're in the lottery, you get to stay at that out-of-zone school for the whole year, is way too broad. And that need, that particularly needs to be tightened up and have some particular guidelines. And like Mr. Kanesic says, each school of choice is unique, and so those particular guidelines will be unique to some extent for each program. It'll be individualized, so.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Hidalgo.
Thank you. I just wanted to share a couple of things. First off, until and unless we can address the issues that we have with transportation and, you know, the cost as it relates to the schools of choice, I would suggest that before we expand, or in order to expand or add an additional academy, we either downsize or take one away. And it may be one that, as you mentioned earlier, is just not filling up each year. And so I think we should start there. And look, not to beat a dead horse, I think you are right on, Ms. Samick. I think that we should be getting recognized for the school of choice, for the academies in this parish. And I believe that the main reason we are not is because of the abuse that Ms. Morris mentioned. I didn't realize, and I probably still don't realize, how large the issue, the problem is. The number of students who are in an academy because they got lucky, because they wanted to go to a certain school, it's unacceptable, and I too believe that we should be able to immediately remove those students and send them back to their zoned school, if that is the case. I understand it's not going to be easy. I get it. The lottery process is there, it's hard to turn it around. I agree with them wholeheartedly, it has to be done. Not only are there private school and charter school students who we could bring back to the district if the process were more streamlined, but just as important, or maybe more importantly, the students that are in our district today that would really thrive in those academies that never get a chance to get in because of that one, or a hundred, or 500 students who get in just because they want to go to a certain school. So I know it's tough, but I too hope that you all can find a way to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments, questions? All right, then we can move on to the last item on the agenda, which is the status update on information for the Risk Management Department. Ms. Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Morris. I do have the first, I would say, draft of some claims information and costs that you'd asked me to pull. I got this Friday from the TPAs, and I'm going through it to make sure that things are redacted that need to be, and that everything is the way we wanted it. So I am working on that, close to being finished. I do also-
Do you have a projected date? Do you have a projected date?
I'm sure by your May meeting.
Okay.
Yes. If not before, but definitely by then.
Okay.
I do have also, in response to an inquiry from Mr. Kanesic about early return to work from workers' comp and other measures to mitigate workers' comp costs, and I have a draft of, we have a workers' comp compensation policy in place, and I've added some language to it that I think will help, and I want to hand it out for y'all to review, not to act on immediately, but to look at it and give me some feedback as to what you think, if this is along the lines of what you're looking for. So I'm going to hand that out.
Great. And while you're passing that out, Ms. Bernard, are y'all also looking at preparing or developing some job descriptions for sedentary-type jobs that would be part of the return-to-work program?
Yes, ma'am. We have one that's actually filled right now, a receptionist, assistant receptionist in the front, for someone who was on assault pay. So obviously, we were going to pay her salary whether she worked or not, so it didn't cost us any more to create that spot for her. So that worked well.
All right. And when do you anticipate being able to get back with us?
Those are drafted. I probably need just to get HR to look them over, and also talk to Billy about where we'll fund them from.
All right. So I think one of the things we had talked about before with the return-to-work program is, we have, what, forty-plus facilities that are in use across the district. So since many of the workers' comp employees who are injured are restricted to sedentary work, then we have at least that many locations for creating appropriate jobs based on individuals' restrictions, whether it means they need to stand and sit every so many minutes, not lift over a certain weight, and considering the amount of administration that's required, then, you know, having a kind of a general job description that can be individualized, that might include making copies, putting things into the teachers' mailboxes, anything that would meet, fall within the doctor's restrictions, because I think that each individual's physician would have to approve such a job description under a return-to-work program. So kind of a general job description in that nature would be great as well.
Certainly.
Can we title the position Workers' Comp Admin Assistant or anything? Can we put Workers' Comp in the title?
Probably not. The courts would analyze it pretty closely to determine whether it's a real, true job, or if it's simply a means to cut somebody off of workers' comp benefits. Here, the goal of workers' comp is to return individuals to work, but we currently don't have anything in place for many of our injured workers. We don't have physicians, and so they stay home and continue to get their workers' comp benefits. And I think there's many, there are many studies that say that the longer you're out of work, the harder it is to get back to work, so.
So, Ms. Morris, so it might be helpful in the budget discussions to budget some positions anticipated for these return-to-work opportunities. Otherwise, we're double-staffing.
I agree. Now, when we have an injured worker who's taken out of work, we have to fill that position, and we're still paying them workers' comp as well. So once that employee is pulled back into the workforce, then we're not paying them their workers' comp. So it's going to kind of even out somewhat, so.
And I'd add that in some cases, that would only need to be temporary. You might not have a permanent disability. It might be for ninety days, so that's also a consideration.
Right. Now, since we're talking about kind of general risk management matters, I made a list for myself. One thing we've been trying to get a handle on since we took office is just our, our general legal representation. And I know that some of it is overseen by your department, but it seems like we have several other attorneys who may be overseen by other departments. And Dr. Aguilar, it seems to me that we need to have a central, not necessarily somebody in charge, but somebody who is aware of kind of the umbrella of our legal services across our district. So for example, and I may be missing some, I have, we have litigation attorneys, including Hammond and Seals, Tanya Smith, Bro and Lemoine, they handle workers' comp and other litigation. We have attorneys that handle construction and bid issues. We have immigration attorneys, we have special ed attorneys, we have tax attorneys, we have, sometimes we have other special employment matters, and then we've got the third-party administrator as well. So that's several different areas of law that we have retained attorneys for, but I don't think they all are being overseen by one particular person. And so I think that, I think, I would like, Dr. Aguilar, for you to kind of consider who, within your administrative staff, would be the person to kind of oversee the general umbrella of our legal representation, so that we have a firm handle on what's going on from a legal perspective. Mr. Kanesic?
I had a question regarding the third-party administrator. Is there any way you can provide maybe their contract and how we pay them and how that works? The second was, I went blank, sorry.
Ms. Angel? Nothing? Okay. Anything else? Anything else, Ms. Bernard?
No, ma'am.
All right. So we can hope by our May meeting that we'll have some of the information?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Mr. Kanesic?
Sorry, I found it. It was back there. Settlement authority. I don't have a really good handle on how we handle settlement authority, and certainly I'm concerned about decisions of settlement being made prior to maybe the board knowing about it, but I'm more concerned about the decisions that, when we decide not to settle things, that maybe should have been settled. And I don't, I don't know personally how we do that, and then I have some recommendations once I hear that answer.
Sure. So Mona, you and I discussed this recently. Mona's a risk manager, and so she is authorized by previous board authority and precedent. Up to $20,000, the risk managers allowed to enter into settlement agreements. Beyond $20,000, it would, it would come to the board?
Yes, sir.
So in the twenty-three months that I've been working for you, we haven't brought any of those requests to the board? So most of these are, most of these are small settlement issues, aren't they?
We've brought a few, but yes, most things, bus accidents or things like that will-
That's right. Bus accidents and workers' comp and things like that.
Anything over twenty comes to the board.
Maybe now that we have, because things are a little different with this board, we have a different function as far as the executive committee goes, maybe we consider presenting the months recommended settlements to the executive committee once a month, so that you can have some, so that the board, what I feel, like, again, you've brought, let me ask that question. How many cases have we settled for 20,000 or below over the last two, two and a half years?
Oh, many. Maybe a hundred.
So a hundred times $20,000 roughly, or let's just say an average of $10,000. That's a lot of money going out of the door without the board ever even having knowledge of it. So, and I'm not saying that Mona's not capable, or that you're not capable, but it seems like that the reason that we are here, the reason we are in place, is one of those checks and balances. And we don't want to slow up the process. I understand sometimes settlement time is a big factor in settlement, and especially getting a timely settlement may reduce the amount. But it seems like there needs to be- But it seems like there needs to be at least some sort of board or executive committee knowledge of the settlements that are coming, coming forward, especially when it's to the tune of a million to $2 million over a couple of years.
We can do that. We can bring, would you like an executive committee meeting monthly?
And I think, I'm going to, I hate to interrupt, but maybe we also need to have an explicit policy that dictates, I, I understand what you said before, like Mona has authority given by precedent and previous board action, but it needs to be explicit. If we're going to give someone authority to write checks, it needs to be explicit that-
Absolutely.
Or approved. I don't, I don't mean literally.
So Mona, maybe we can work up some language for your consideration? And then likewise, in a month, bring you a representative sampling of what's been offered for settlement during that next four weeks?
And I think just as importantly, these are the ones we've decided not to settle and these are the reasons why. Because with that should come from our lawyers, you're choosing not to settle, but here's the potential risk for litigation costs and here's your potential settle, or judgment risk so that the board says, you know, maybe we do need to reconsider settling it if our risk or exposure is this much more.
Okay.
Ms. Bernard?
The policy I gave you does address the settlement authority with respect to workers' comp. We just follow the same procedure for liability claims. I just want to point that out. Um, another thing is when we discuss these cases, it will have to be in executive session. I just want to remind you of that. And, um, also that many claims we settle are not in litigation, so you won't have legal involved in every one of them, when the smaller ones, you know, that are not that, um, serious.
Yeah, I was going to bring up the point that we need to discuss these in executive session and I'm not sure that we can have an executive session for the executive committee or if it needs to be for the full board. So we may need to just look at a, a policy, Dr. Aguilar, or a date where the board meets regularly, um, not just for settlement conferences that our legal staff are bringing to us, but just to kind of get an update on our current caseload, including non-litigation. Um, just a quick update. Um, now, we have to just watch the rules for executive sessions because you do have to list each litigation case and we'll have to use initials, um, for the employees as necessary. Um, but it's just a new policy or procedure that we, uh, need to consider so that we are, um, keeping track of what's happening.
Absolutely. Might be a simple thing, simply to consider reducing that threshold. Right now, it's currently set at $20,000.
Well, I think one of the issues Mr. Kanesic raised is, let's say, for example, a plaintiff's attorney says, you know, we want to settle this case for 50,000 and a decision is made that, no, heck no, we're not because we don't think we've done anything wrong. So the board is never aware that that offer was even made and there may be a cost benefit analysis, uh, a cost of defense issue that the board might want to consider and they might say, well, you're right, maybe it's going to be tough, but what we're looking at might be worse. I mean, we have to look at it from a financial standpoint as well, so, um, so that might be, we're kind of looking at it in the negative as well as the, the, you know, positive as well, so. So we just need to kind of streamline or improve that procedure from what it's been.
Okay.
Any other comments, sir? All right. And that's the-
I had one more question.
Mr. Kanesic?
And you don't have to talk about it today, but can we get another update, uh, now that we're approaching the end of the year, of the bus accident comparison for the close of this year with the two previous years?
Yes, sir.
And that is the last thing on our agenda, so I will adjourn this meeting.